Do you have an excellent young woman in case of...
I don't.
I can go get you one the other time.
Okay, the meeting is back in session at seven all three. PM?
All right. Recommended motion to approve the meeting, the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting of February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Approval of township treasures report, approval of March bills and February payroll in the amount of eighty, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand sixty-five cents as presented.
Motion.
Second. Second, provided that, um, the way I have read it, I just wanted to make sure that, that you have as read in attendance for the national board. It looked like.
I wasn't there.
Possibly had an accident, but I wasn't. She was in attendance, so just on record that she was in attendance for that. Roll call.
All right. Ambrose?
Yes.
LeShure?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Pettigrew?
Yes.
Velos Davis?
Yes.
Hill, yes. Communications. Uh, for your request, electronic copies of public official security bonds requested by Ted Novak. All right. All right, um, more reports. All right, informational.
All right, a board report, I'm sorry. I don't know if anyone else has a board report. Uh, the Sunnybrook District one seventy-one School Board will be attending the National School Boards Association twenty twenty-two annual conference and exposition in San Diego, California, April seventh through April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. This conference is the one national event that brings together education leaders to learn about best governance practices, gain insight into child development, and learn about new programs and technology that can help enrich student learning. The National School Board Association is one of the few, if not the only, places where school board members from around the country can receive the training necessary to address the instructional needs of students and to improve the efficiency of district operations. Learning together will move our work forward as a governance team and the numerous workshops offered to help us make an impact. The National School Board Association Conference offers workshops for boards looking to strengthen their governance role. During the conference, our board members will have a myriad of workshops to choose to attend in the following categories: equity and diversity, governance and executive leadership for us, innovation and district management in helping the board clarify its goals, personal development to better engage the community, safe and supportive school, school board-slash-superintendent relationship to strengthen the board-superintendent relationship, student achievement and accountability by monitoring district performance, technology and digital learning. The general sessions will feature keynotes featured speakers such as Greg Burr. He's a father and children's advocate and director for the Gravel Foundation. Ryan Rydisky, award-winning author, reporter, and speechwriter. Liz Murray, co-founder and executive director of the Author Project. And Damon Young, founder, CEO of Boo Boo, presidential ambassador for global entrepreneurship, star of ABC Shark Tank, and CEO of the Shark Group. We are all committed to this learning opportunity for us to gain skills to better service our stakeholders, district, and most importantly, our over nine hundred students that are depending on us to serve. Thank you.
Okay. So your name, please, Pettigrew? Okay. Informational items, Mr. David Schrader, chief school business official?
I am standing there for Mr. Schrader. So I just wanted to let you know that on March fifteenth, we opened a bid, and at two o'clock, so we had different vendors come in to do the construction work that we're trying to get done this summer, and I'm going to be kind enough to you and read what we're going to get done. But I want you to know again, on March fifteenth, we opened up the construction bid. We met with our architect, they came, they submitted, and when you look through your board package tonight, we're hoping that you would approve the one bid that we selected for the general public. What we are trying to do, if you look in Jim here, we've got a very nice lighting system. Here, we're trying to put the same lighting system throughout all of Heritage Middle School, and the classrooms, and down the hallways. We are also looking to redo the science labs, the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade science lab. One of the classrooms we have, we converted from a science lab into a classroom, so there are, um, different sinks and different things of that nature, different things of that nature that need to be taken down, as well as there are classrooms over at Nathan Hill Elementary that have some carpet on there that needs to be removed and replaced, and we're looking to put tile on the floor there as well. And if you remember, last summer, we redid the bathrooms, several bathrooms in this building, and there were some that we still did not do, so we're looking to redo those as well. So that's, um, all the things that the bid is indicative of, like we did last summer. We will post that on, um, our webpage and give the community an update of progress as, as things get torn down and rebuilt. So again, if you accept the bid that we put out there for this evening, those are the things that we would like to get done.
There you go, thank you. All right, thank you. Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Mrs. Lori Onstren?
I just want to say thank you to all of our parents who got our students here at Heritage to school on time last week. Uh, testing went very well and very smooth here in, at Heritage Middle School, and I want to say a special thanks to the following employees, Mrs. Washington, Mrs. Brady, Mrs. Lowery, and to all of our teachers who did the testing and so forth for our students. They did a wonderful job. And again, parents, just please remember that fifth grade, third grade, and fourth grade will be testing starting tomorrow, so please ensure that your students get a good night's rest, and definitely eat a breakfast rather than homework here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Interim direct, no, yep, of Special Services, Miss Kathy Martin. No, thank you. Technology Director, Mr. Mike McGowan.
No worries.
Thank you. Press School Heritage Middle School, Ms. Chantel Kangret.
Good evening, Dr. Pedersen, Sunnybrook Board of Education, how are you guys? All right, so last month, I mentioned that Heritage Student Council was raising money for a variety of Illinois, which is a nonprofit for kids with disabilities. Well, the students raised a total of three hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and the teachers' days were a huge, huge success. Our students really enjoyed watching and participating and throwing food at our stu-, at our teachers, putting, um, hitting Mr. Montague in the face with the pie, um, and I'm posting these pictures on the webpage, so make sure you guys go and check them out. Um, some of our teachers, like I said before, ate crickets and worms, so it was, it was a lot of fun for us at Heritage. Some other things I, that, that I worked mentioning is that spring is here and traffic has begun. We had a total of seventy-six students, um, who tried out for traffic. And so as long as they are maintaining a C average, um, and appropriate behaviors, we are allowing all of those students to participate, mostly because we, you know, when we're coming in from the pandemic, we want to make sure that all of our kids get an opportunity to, to engage in the extracurricular activities. Um, intramural volleyball is also starting, but we're, we're coming back after spring, ready to back for fifth and sixth grade students. It will be held in Nathan Hill, thank you, Mr. Kent. Um, we'll start in April, the exact dates haven't been determined yet, um, but I'll be, I'll make sure that we get that information out as soon as we finalize everything. Another thing to note is that the National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony is scheduled for April eighteenth. When I started at Heritage, at, at administration, one of my goals was to create a student-led environment, and so I wanted to acknowledge our eighth graders, who I'm really impressed with their maturity and their ability to step up. They're doing away with the no snitching clause that a lot of our students are engaging in, and they're really stepping up and making sure that administration knows what's going on, um, behind the scenes of things. They are really holding, um, themselves and other students accountable for using them as student supervisors for our fifth and sixth grade students who still are having a little problem with regulation. They're escorting them to classes and making sure that everybody is safe in the building, and we also did the, we're also moving into the peer mediation, they're taking, taking part of that, owning that, and so this will allow us to create and, and cultivate that student-led environment. I also want to give a shout out to Mrs. Laurie and Mrs. St. John for adding yet another thing to their plates. Lastly, I want you guys to know that we have thirty-nine worthed schools left for Sunnybrook Strong. Have a sort of fantastic evening. That's my, I'm excited, you have, you said April eighteenth, you have a time. Um, it's, it'll be an evening, I'm not sure exactly, um, what time, but I definitely let you know. Absolutely.
Principal Nathan Hill School, Mr. Joseph Kent.
Oh, good evening, everyone. It is, uh, just very quickly, uh, Dr. Loes stole a little bit of my thunder, but I'm just going to reach up and claim it. We start testing tomorrow, third grade and fourth grade, and it's going to be smooth. So please, just make sure your kids have a good night's sleep, and we will do the rest. We're kind of excited about it, and we expect things to go very well. The other piece is really kind of a big piece I wanted to throw up. A big thank you out to all of our parents that have been cooperating. Within the last month or so, we changed the entire dismissal traffic plan. Um, and I got to tell you, it has been a much safer environment. We stopped some of the three-point turns, we have stopped some potential accidents from happening, we're getting buses in and buses out, daycare vans in and daycare vans out, and that can only happen with the cooperation of our parents. So Jim, thank you to all of our parents for just making life a little easier and certainly making life safer in Nathan Hill. Thank you.
All righty, Policy Committee, we have seventy-two policies listed and posted.
We did the first reading. We did the first reading.
Oh, sorry, oh, we did the first reading. Recommended motion to approve the resignation of, with regret, of Ms. Allison Carlton, English Language Arts teacher, Heritage Middle School, effective April first, two thousand and twenty-two as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Thompson? Get that right, Velos Davis, I'm sorry, Velos. All right, Ambrose?
Yes.
Velos Davis?
Yes.
LeShure?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Pettigrew?
Yes.
Hill, yes. Recommended motion to approve the resignation of Ms. Cynthia Flattenberg, with regret, effective March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Ambrose?
Yes.
LeShure?
Yes.
Pettigrew?
Yes.
Hill, yes. Velos Davis?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Recommended motion to approve the family medical leave of Ms. Julia Galgen, effective May second, two thousand and twenty-two, with expected return date of October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Velos Davis? Second by Ambrose? Okay. Velos Davis?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Hill, yes. Pettigrew?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
LeShure?
Yes.
Recommended motion to change the April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting to Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two?
Second.
Motion by Thompson, second by Velos Davis, Thompson?
Yes.
Velos Davis?
Yes.
Hill, yes. LeShure?
Yes.
Pettigrew?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
To approve the consolidation district plan for all title grants as presented.
Second.
LeShure?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Pettigrew?
Yes.
Hill, yes. Velos Davis?
Yes.
To approve the two thousand and twenty-two summer mowing and fertilizing contract with American lawn line as presented.
Second.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Hill, yes. Velos Davis?
Yes.
LeShure?
Yes.
Pettigrew?
Yes.
To approve the two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three milk contract with Cloverleaf as presented.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Velos Davis?
Yes.
LeShure?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hill, yes. Pettigrew?
Yes.
To award the various improvements projects at Heritage School and Nathan Hill School to the lowest responsible bidder, Construction Solution of Illinois Incorporated, in the amount of two million, two hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Ambrose?
Yes.
LeShure?
Yes.
Velos Davis?
Yes.
Pettigrew?
Yes.
Hill, yes. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna put your, the second person's name. To acknowledge the years of service for the following staff, staff members, as presented. Thirty years, Kim Wallace, twenty-five years, Bill Swicer. Twenty years of Linda Coy, ten years Vivian Lopez, ten years of Eugene Johnson.
Motion.
Second.
Ambrose?
Yes.
LeShure?
Yes.
Velos Davis?
Yes.
Pettigrew?
Yes.
Yes, Thompson?
Yes.
To extend mathnasium math tutoring until April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, as presented.
Motion.
Question.
Second, I need to stop. Second.
Okay, um, so with the mathnasium, when, when it was presented to us as a board, uh, my concerns were the same as you all's concern, well, a couple of other board members was concerned with math, math muscles and the amount of time that was available, um, to get students to the level of learning that was necessary. I know there was a lot of concern about the, um, lack of communication. I know there were a lot of concerns about, uh, the curriculum, and here we are again with the same concerns for mathnasium. I'm not sure if, um, I'm not sure if it's, if the questions have been answered, I'm gonna finish. I'm not sure if the questions have been answered in regards to the people that are tutoring, because I don't have a student that's attending. However, we also, I also have not received any type of report that this is being, that this is effective.
I'm trying to understand your, um, concerns of what you're, what you're alluding to.
I wasn't alluding, I said it very clearly that when we stated that there wasn't enough time, I wanted to be on record that we stated before, we did not give math muscles the opportunity to show themselves. No, we didn't.
They were first hired, they were first hired back during the regular school year, and then we picked them up again over the summer. So they actually get twice from us.
During the pandemic?
Yes.
Okay.
They did.
Okay.
So.
Are we having the same issue with mathnasium or?
No, we're not, actually, mathnasium, from my understanding, my son is in it, it's going well. They have a nice turnout, the students are showing up, that's from my understanding. There's only one instructor, one staff member that's actually helping out. The rest are all mathnasium instructors, tutors. So I'm trying to understand.
I just want to make sure that we are doing the right thing for the students. I don't have any students, like I said, I don't have any students in there. But again, we, you're giving me the perspective of your son and yourself. So I just want to make sure that everyone is benefiting off of this the proper way, so that if it's not, we can move to do something different if we need to.
So I guess. For the sake of, um, not lacing, um, tutoring for our students, I'm okay with extending the tutoring, however, at the end of this term, I would like to revisit to see what improvement happened.
Right.
That matters, that is a fair, that's fair.
And I don't have a problem with it mixing it in either, but I also do want to make sure that we're going through the same, the same judgments that we use for the other services that we have, so that it is fair.
Right, yeah, I agree, and the, and the good thing about it is that we'll have data from what the children tested when they first walked through the door to what they test at the end of the program. That's how we can see their growth.
That's the same for the other program too, right?
Okay, um, no offense, you can't compare mathnasiums to math muscles, but we can move on and we could talk about that at a later time day, but that's like comparing apples to oranges, there's a lot of different variants that have occurred, but we could still take a look at students' progress and things like that if you want. But again, if you're talking about comparing mathnasiums to math muscles, you really cannot, because totally two different situations and different types of supports have been given.
And I also want to make sure that we're just judging this fairly, so if it's not benefiting everyone, that we can find something else.
Everyone as in the students as a whole.
As a whole, not just, not just.
Of course, that, that's, that's the goal of everything, is to make sure that everyone can benefit from it.
Thank you.
That was Pettigrew, my second.
Anything else?
Nope.
No, I'm good.
All right.
Go call, please.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Pettigrew?
Yes.
Hill, yes. Velos Davis?
Yes.
LeShure?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ready for adjournment? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a motion? All right, Thompson? All right, Ambrose?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hill, yes. Velos Davis?
Yes.
Pettigrew?
Yes.
LeShure?
Yes.
Appreciate you guys.